Good afternoon, good evening, I'm sorry, good evening. The thought for today is genius is the ability to reduce complicated to simple. That's by C W seven. Today is August the fourth, two thousand and twenty. I'm thankful today to have you guys join us today. Thank you for caring enough about your community to be here tonight. We want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to ask our sheriff if he would to come up and lead us in prayer. There's a special sheriff, if you would, come up please. There's a special, special person that we want to ask prayer for also tonight. We also want to make sure we include Ms. Lisa Connor in our prayers tonight as well. Thank you Sheriff for praying for us tonight and please pray for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and those of you that are all here tonight. It's an honor to stand here before you as we go to our Savior in prayer. Oh, you're trying to follow this once more again that you have allowed mankind to assemble. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this hour. We thank you, oh heavenly Father, for being the Creator of the universe, the Creator of all things, the ruler of all things. And as we come here, oh heavenly Father, on this day leaning and depending on you, we ask right now, oh heavenly Father, that you would come in and be in the midst of this gathering here this afternoon, that we will make decisions that will be great to this community, great to this nation, and be great to all mankind. As we gather here this afternoon, we would ask that you would remove self and allow the work of you, oh heavenly Father, to be seen through all of these here tonight in action. As we stand here tonight, oh heavenly Father, we call upon you to continue to bind us together in love, peace and harmony, oh heavenly Father, so that we could continue to do the work that you've called upon us to do. Do the work that we have been called to do as elected officials. That is to carry out our fundamental duties in which we have been called to do. Now, as I stand here, oh heavenly Father, for those, oh heavenly Father, who are in need, Ms. Lisa Connor, whatever her needs are, oh heavenly Father, we know that at this hour and even at the beginning of time, you know all of Lisa Connor's problems and all that she was going to endure in this time in life. But we ask, oh heavenly Father, that you have mercy upon her. Grant her, oh heavenly Father, that peace. Grant her, oh heavenly Father, that healing that she may need, oh heavenly Father, at this time. And oh heavenly Father, I stand here at this hour, I stand here in the need of understanding and the need of just direction for the Simpson family. We know him as being the oldest law enforcement officer in the nation, one that worked here at the Office of Sheriff of Newton County. I just received a call and talked with the family. He's been rushed at this time to Grady. So we ask, oh heavenly Father, that you would strengthen the family, strengthen Mr. Simpson, and protect him, oh heavenly Father, at this time. Whatever the doctors may find, oh heavenly Father, we ask that this hour, that the doctors, oh heavenly Father, would be the healing hands through you. And oh heavenly Father, as we stand here on this day, I cannot just stand here and not say thank you for all that you've done in our lives this day. Thank you for caring us, oh heavenly Father, through this pandemic. And I know if we lean and depend on you, oh heavenly Father, we know that there's a brighter side to all things in life. All we have to do is stand on your word, believe in your word, and everything will become, as we call it to be. As we call for these blessings, we ask, oh heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we say amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much, Sheriff. Next, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance. And we're going to ask if Commissioner Schultz, if you would, lead us in this.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Father who rules the states, one nation, one big house. Thank you, Commissioner. You have the authority to add this.
Commissioners, thank you Commissioner Schultz for that. Commissioners, you had an opportunity to look at the agenda tonight. So I seek a motion that we approve, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four to zero. Thank you. Our next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You may do so at this time. Please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Our next, in the chairman's report, our own Commissioner Henderson celebrated another birthday. And he's not here just yet. I don't know if he'll be here tonight or not, but we want to congratulate, congratulate him and send out happy birthday wishes to him. I think his birthday was actually yesterday, is that right? Yeah, yesterday. Also, that I don't know. I think he's about sixty-two, I think, sixty-two or sixty-three. Also, guys, remember early voting is going on, it's still going on. They go to birthday man right there. Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Sixty-four, I was awful, I won, sixty-four.
Oh, you take it in sixty-five?
No, sixty-three. Yeah, there you go. But guys, also, yeah, remember the early voting is going on at this time. Also, yeah, they are giving, Salvation Army, they're giving free milk away over at the Baptist church on every Tuesday from nine AM to twelve noon. If you will, please, if you want some milk, you can get as many as you want. You can go buy and you don't have to have any kind of ID, nothing, they asking any questions, but they just want to make sure that they give this milk away. They had a contract with, I think, they told me with the school system, and they got some extra milk. They wanted to make sure that they get this milk out to the citizens here in Newton County. So please, ma'am, please, sir, if you know anybody that needs some milk, please go by the First Baptist Church from nine to tw- nine AM to twelve noon on Tuesdays, every Tuesday. If you know anybody that got a newborn baby that may need some milk, go tell them about it and then go by and get you some milk, Commissioner Mason. But that's all I have. That's all I have in my chairman's report. Now, also, I want to make sure that we, make sure we remind everybody that we still want to make sure that, encourage people to fill out their census as well. We're still doing our census. We want to make sure that everyone in this community is counted. Please, ma'am, sir, please spread that word. Nothing else in the chairman's report, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief this evening. I just have a few things. One, I wanted to let the board know that we are the recipients of a thousand dollar grant from the Department of Agriculture out of their spay and neuter program. And this was an award, the grant award was between one and ten thousand dollars, and we received a thousand dollars. And so that'll go towards our program to, for spay and neutering animals at the animal services. Also, I'm very pleased to report that our lost and splotched collections for the month of June are nine point eight-two percent higher than they were for June of two thousand and nineteen. So we're very fortunate in that we are continuing to increase in our collections and have really done very well during this pandemic, unlike a lot of other communities in the state who've had a lot more difficulty than we have. So we're very pleased with those numbers. That puts June as the third highest month in the, in the last twelve months. The other two, the highest was December, followed by July, and then this June would be the third highest month. So our collections tended to do well. Our TAVT collections, that is the revenue that we receive from the sales of new cars, they continue to grow as well. So fortunately for us, we're, we're, we're doing pretty well. I also wanted to bring your attention, we do have a, pardon me, a snapshot report from the Gwinnett Newton Rockdale County Health Departments. You have a copy of that on your, on your desk there. It's got a lot of information on it, and this is as of twelve PM, August third. And so you'll see that the number of cases here in Newton are at fifteen hundred eighty-five. The number, total number of deaths in our county unfortunately have been at thirty-four. And there are a number of hospitalization cases. And let me see if they've got that broken down by county. It looks like they've got them all together. We do know that there are a number of people who are in ICU at our Piedmont Newton. The hospital is not being overrun, but there are a number of people who have been hospitalized and continue to do so in the, in the county. Contesting is continuing, and it is available, various sites throughout the county. Piedmont has a testing site there, the health department, of course, and as well, pardon me, there are other spots that are local here too, over in Conyers and so forth for testing. So, and testing is being made available more and more throughout the state. So with that, that's all that I had for this meeting, unless there's any questions about anything.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, thank you, Lord, for that very beautiful birthday card that y'all sent me to my home.
You're welcome, sir. Hope you had a good one.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it, and we thank you. Is, is this information count available to anybody who may want to get?
Yes, sir, actually, it is. And we pulled this information from the Gwinnett Newton Rockdale Health Department, County Health Department. It's the East Metro Health Department. And you can, anybody can go online and obtain this information. But I had Walker copy all of this off for you all today and assemble it together in this one report. But the public has the availability for this. Also, there's a link, I believe, on our website to this information as well.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. I had asked a few months ago, I think about two or three weeks ago, about the hazard pay for our first responders. And have we, have we managed to get anything on that?
Well, as of the end of last week, we finally were able to get access to the funds. The funds had been deposited. We do have access now. We are going through the, all of the information for how to, how to file a claim in the portal and so forth. So, and I, the, pardon me, the community grants that we're looking at doing, I've met with the committee, and we'll have a follow-up meeting to wrap up all of our application process and everything next Monday. And I'll be meeting with the folks from the Chamber of Commerce for the business ones as well. ACCG has asked for an extension of the time because the timeframes are very, very tight. And it, the, the, there's a deadline for the expenditures of September, September the first, but we're also investigating whether or not we can put together a program and not, as long as we have the outline for the program, whether or not we can submit that to the state and reserve those funds without having to, to actually submit receipts to them. I will tell you that there was a lot of confusion throughout the state. I talked both with Matt Pepper today from City of Oxford and with Scott Andrews from the city of Covington. And both of, both of them as well are looking at the funds, but there's been a tremendous amount of confusion among the cities as well as with the counties. GMA, as my understanding, is also petitioning the governor's office to ask for some extensions of the deadlines because it's really not enough time to put everything in place that is needed in order to, to really adequately distribute this money to the folks that really need it. So.
Well, absolutely. And one last thing I want to say, I understand that there's some of our deputies who have been exposed to COVID nineteen, and I think maybe one, possibly two have been hospitalized too as well. And I think that we need to, you know, my personal take on it is that we need to do what we need to do in order to say that we appreciate them. And I know that some of the, at least the closest little government, I think, city has already, you know, given them, their men and first, men and women first responders something. And I think, you know, it's time, we can get them, fall in line with them too as well, if ours. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Our next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioner had the opportunity to look at the consent agenda. I seek a motion, please.
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Next is R zero eight zero four two zero B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, adopting the millage rate for twenty-twenty property taxes. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually going to turn this over to our finance director, Brittany White, to take care of this, to read the resolution and the other information that's necessary for
Resolution R zero eight zero four two zero B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, adopting the millage rate for twenty-twenty property taxes. Whereas Article One, Title Thirty-six, Section Eighty-one, Paragraph One of the Official Code of Georgia requires, among other things, that counties prepare and adopt a balanced budget annually. And whereas on July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, the Newton County Board of Commissioners adopted its fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-one, operating budget for the general fund, which lists proposed expenditures, proposes certain levies and changes to finances such as expenditures, and lists the anticipated revenues to be derived, therefore, from the period beginning July one, two thousand and twenty, and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas the proposed fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-one, operating budget is balanced, such that projected revenues for each fund equal proposed expenditure appropriations. And whereas its regular called meeting held on August fourth, two thousand and twenty at seven PM, and after public notices of the same, the Newton County Board of Commissioners met for the purpose of adopting and levying a millage rate of twelve point nine one six. Now, therefore, be it in a hereby resolved that a millage rate of twelve point nine one six is hereby adopted and levied for tax year two thousand and twenty. Be it resolved this fourth day of August, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's, it's my understanding that it's still a rollback, right? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone, Mr. Kerr?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. For the record, if you would, Brittany, if you would say what the previous millage rate was, where we were, and.
Can you come up here so that everything will be on camera and official because we are Facebook Live, please? Thank you.
And if you would, for the benefit of the public, if you would state what the millage rate was for fiscal year two thousand and twenty?
Fiscal year two thousand and twenty, property tax year two thousand and nineteen, the millage rate was thirteen point four three.
Can you repeat that, thirteen?
Thirteen point four three.
Any, any, any more questions, guys? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I seek a motion of approval. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can make a resolution, R zero eight zero four two zero B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, adopting the millage rate for twenty-twenty
Can I get, I'm sorry? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It passes four one. Next on the agenda is county manager seeking approval of proposed, of the proposed FY-21 employee holiday schedule. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Annually, typically, we adopt the holiday calendar at the same time that we adopt the annual budget as well and the millage rate. So we are simply asking, you have the copy of the proposed holiday schedule. There are no changes from last year's holiday schedule, and so we are requesting that this schedule be adopted.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, guys.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the proposed FY-21 employee holiday schedule.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
I bet you called my name, raised my hand, raised my hand, Mr. Chairman. I had hoped at some point that we might look at making Juneteenth, June nineteenth, a paid holiday. It's similar to, same, same as we did for Mother of King holiday before my, before I became on board of Board of Commissioners. And I was, you know, you know, just kind of wanted to throw it out there because I don't know of a discussion of, of the holidays as far as, we could throw out any other days that we might want to consider.
That's a question, that's a question for the board. Anybody want to talk about that? Anybody want to start off a discussion on that? The board can make a decision. The board can make a decision on that if you want to have a discussion on it. He asked, he proposed a question to the board, that's right, Commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it is, you know, and, you know, I guess just in lieu of what has been happening in our community and the fact that I think some of the counties in Atlanta, and maybe even some in South Georgia, have chose to celebrate Juneteenth, which is June nineteenth, in celebration of the, the year of which, you know, the slaves, I think, in Texas, I think, for two years and a half, they had not been freed and they didn't know. And so there's been a celebration that had been celebrated within several counties here in Georgia. And I thought that it was something that we should look at and hopefully adopt that date.
So that's a question proposed to the board. So I'm going to open it up for discussion because we are still dealing with the holiday schedule for, so anybody want to speak on that?
Mr. Chair, I don't have an objection to that. If that's something that this board wants to consider, I'm definitely open to having that discussion, and I don't have an objection to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? All right. So I'm going to, any more discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is this a holiday observed by, the, is it a holiday observed by the state as of this time or, or any other state?
I don't think it's a state holiday, but other counties are, are actually doing that. I know, I know the Cal is doing it, I know Rockdale is doing it. And I think Commissioner Henderson is asking the board to consider that as one of the holidays for the employees. Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd be willing to entertain that idea if we exchanged it for another holiday. I mean, this is a day we're going to pay employees not to work, right? So I consider if we could do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry? Commissioner, Commissioner Cal?
How many holidays does the county employees have now? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, yeah.
New Year's Eve. Yeah.
Okay. We can't add this tonight because it's not on the agenda, right? I mean, we have to put it on the agenda to vote on it?
No, we can amend it.
You could add it as a holiday.
If it's something we want to do, we can amend the agenda. Okay. Yeah, if something we want to do, we can amend the agenda.
Think about it a little bit and see. I know there's some other counties and other cities that are doing this. I just kind of like to get a feel for what's going on with that.
Okay. So, okay. You done? Commissioner Schultz?
There's ten paid holidays, two half-days, and then a personal floating holiday. So, you know, those all need to be, I would say that we probably need to have a discussion about the financial considerations of either substituting Juneteenth. You know, we've approved a budget, so if we added it as a holiday, then that would have to be a budget amendment. So I think that we need to probably look at what the financial considerations are and if we can substitute it in or how we would work that.
I don't think we'd have to do a budget amendment. I think the, the impact actually would be pretty minimal because we'd be paying people, if, if the people are off, we would pay them. If they're here, they're going to be paid. So the only thing that.
You base their salary on an annual basis, so it doesn't matter how many days they work or how many days they're off.
Well.
You got a certain amount of money you're going to allocate for a year.
Yes, it's, they're, yeah.
It's really already in there, it's just a matter.
Right, it's already in there.
It's a production.
Yeah.
The dollars, it's already budgeted in there if you want to look at it that way, right? Because they're going to be paid whether they're here or not.
Right. I'd just like to see what other cities, city and counties are doing, who's doing what.
So, so I guess we need to ask Mr. Kerr, if we did this, would this hurt our operations?
I don't believe so, but I mean, I'd be glad to look at it and see. I mean, I think generally what we do is we always, anytime we do have a holiday, we, we will make arrangements to make sure that we're not, that we do provide the service and that we're not going to be backed up on something anytime before. I mean, throughout the year, we work around vacation schedules and sick leave and so forth. So I don't think that the addition of the day would be, would negatively impact our production.
It wouldn't.
I don't, I don't believe it would be. I don't, I don't believe it would be, no.
Okay, Commissioner Mason was next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say, could it be where possibly, if we do include this day, where it can be a day for those that want to observe it, they can observe that day and take off that day, but there's no penalty for those that take off, but if those that still want to come to work that day, they still can. So kind of make it where it's optional.
Right, I, I think what you could do, you know, if, however, if this is a, if you wanted to make this, somebody could use this holiday in lieu of another holiday so that the total number of holidays remains the same. I think that is one possible solution. The other possible solution might be to add a person, a second personal day, and then this personal, that personal day, if you want to take it on June nineteen, June nineteenth, that'd be fine. Or again, on any other day that, that is special to you, that you would want to take that, that also could be done. You know, if, if there was not an objection to adding another holiday.
I, I think that would be a great idea to just add a, because right now they just have the one personal floating holiday. So like you said, if we add that second personal holiday, and then they can utilize that second personal holiday to observe June nineteenth, I think that would be a good idea.
Some people now use the personal floating holiday for, you know, they use it for extending vacation, but some people do also use it for certain religious holidays that are not generally celebrated in, in the normal calendar. And so, and it, you might look at it as those type of holidays as well. So that may be a solution, is simply adding another personal floating holiday for those that want to use, be off on that particular day. And those who don't, it's not necessarily a day or a special day that, you know, that they may have a different day that they would like to take off, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
I just want to add, I guess, a comment. Well, I, I can remember when, when Mother King, when we observed that particular day, and he, people didn't want to observe that either, but when you put Mother King Day and you gave him a day with pay, you know, didn't nobody turn it down. They either did whatever they wanted to do on that day, whether cleaning the yards or whatever, they did it. But I think it's, I think in, in order to observe a day that, a day that we all come together is a new one, as we have so much talked about. And I think that should be one, one of the days that we should move forward with.
So are, are you?
If this is something we want to amend the agenda to include for tonight's discussion, the first thing that will need to happen is you will need to make an emotion to amend the agenda for discussion and consideration of Juneteenth as a county holiday for county employees. So if someone would like to make the motion to amend?
So move is stated by the county attorney.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Discussion.
Now, we don't.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, vote on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we're going to take this vote on amending the agenda. Like I said, it was motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Passes five to zero. Now we need to, okay.
Now that item has been appropriately added to the agenda, now the item becomes a discussion and consideration item.
So can we stay in this? We can stand, okay, okay, so we're going to stay in this instead of giving that another number to take the discussion. Okay, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, that was going to be my question, was are we voting on the actual amendment of the agenda or the, the actual item itself? But that cleared itself up, but I would, I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, so why, I know, I remember when I was in the corporate world, we, this is what we use floating, our floating holiday for, was, was this type of scenario. So because what, what, if, if we add another holiday to the schedule, we're essentially adding another expense to our budget. Basically, what we're doing, we're adding another expense. People are going to get paid and there's going to be no services rendered for that day. That's my concern, is adding that expense to our budget and, and no, no matter how small it might be. I just feel like this, if we, if we want to make Juneteenth a holiday, then, then it ought to be you, that employees should use their, their floating holiday for that holiday. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Schultz.
You know, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Edwards because I, I think that Juneteenth is, is very, very important to the black community. Very important to the black community. But there are also holidays that are very important to other communities. And if we're going to be one Newton, I think we've got to be respectful for all communities and all religions and all perspectives. And so it seems to me that the floating holiday is the best option. I, I have no problem with adding a floating holiday. That means that you keep a, you keep services open. But I think that it also allows people from different faiths and different perspectives to observe their particular traditions and what's important to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan.
I guess my, my, my biggest concern, one, I really don't understand exactly what Juneteenth is, to be honest with you. So I understand it has something to do with that was the last day when slaves were freed, or something like that, when it became official.
Pretty much.
Somewhere out in Texas, something like that, okay. I'd like to get some knowledge about that ahead of time before I vote on it. So I need to, I'd like to have some time to do some research, so, and I would like to see what other counties and cities are doing in regards to this. I do, I mean, Commissioner Schultz got a good point. It's very important to the black community, I understand that. But I myself don't have enough education on it to, to really even say I understand it well enough.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think tonight, if, you know, from what it sounds like to me, I think the best resolution would be to add that additional floating holiday and then allow whomever to observe that particular day if they like, because in corporate, that is what they generally do. I know initially, if I can recall correctly, in corporate, even before Martin Luther King became an actual official paid holiday, it was one of those days that you could use a floating holiday to observe. And then once it became an official paid holiday, then there was a paid holiday for everybody. So I think whether or not we have enough information about the holiday specifically or not, I think, I don't think that's the, the, what we're trying to address. We're not trying to address the, the information on the holiday. We're trying to address, do we actually add a floating holiday or not a floating holiday so that those who want to observe that day can observe that day? So I think that's the matter at hand. Do we add another floating holiday or do we not add a floating holiday? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, I think basically what it is, it's, it's the same as it has been for, I guess, years and years and years. Is that we, we seem to be divided about, I think, it's very simple. Anybody who looked at that particular history, and, you know, and the history was that in Texas, the slave had been freed for shoot about two years. And they still was, had slavery in Texas. And it took, it was two years and a half that they finally chose to free the slaves and, uh, free the slaves. And so that's why they celebrate that particular day. And it's, it's been a, it's been a holiday throughout the United States, I think it's, 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 and, and I'm not trying to, trying to tell it, tell nobody how to vote. I'm just saying that if you want to do what, what we've been claiming we want to do, we've been sitting up here and I've been listening, and so I'm pushing off and listening. And to just, so, well, you know, I, I just think about it. And I, and I do believe everybody knows what it is. Same as that statute that everybody fighting there. Oh, if, and, just let, just, just let me say this. I was asked that question about the statute, and I said, well, look here, I said, I hear you. And I heard them, what they were saying. But I said, if the Confederate Army would have won, I wouldn't be here. There wouldn't be a discussion. Either I'd be still on a plantation or dead one. So my quest, the question is, is if we are going to do what we claim we want to do and what's right, then I, I, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see what the question is about. Should be yay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you. I'm done. So there's a, um, um, I think there's a solution that's been offered by, I think, Commissioner Schultz and Commissioner Mason as well. And Mr. Kerr. So if that's a form of emotion, anybody want to make that in a form of emotion? Add an additional floating holiday. You need, you want Ms. Megan to?
Yes, please.
If you will, please.
I would suggest a motion as follows. I would like to make a motion to approve adding a floating holiday for county employees so they may partake in Juneteenth festivities or other holidays based upon their want for a holiday related to Juneteenth or other specific holidays celebrated by the employee.
So move by the county attorney.
Thank you, sir. Um, motion by Commissioner Mason. Can I get a second, please? You want a second?
Is this where I would enter a substitute motion?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we, that we use June nineteenth, that employees be allowed to use June nineteenth as their existing floating holiday. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
That's, yes. As a existing floating holiday, yeah. Anybody want to?
Same, no.
Anybody want to second that? That motion failed for lack of support. We'll move back to the original motion, which is on the floor. Adding an additional holiday, adding an additional floating holiday for the employees, so they, those who want to celebrate June nineteenth, they can. Or, or any other holiday. I'm sorry? Open for discussion, yes.
Lord, we still got joint city and county people working together? Because I know when we, we had changes in our holiday schedule when I was at the city, with the county had changes in the holiday schedule that affected city employees, trying to get, fill up, make up the difference.
I believe we have one person in the Recreation Department, and I believe that there may be one person left in Water Resources, but that person may have retired.
Okay, so that's a minimum.
It would be, we don't have large numbers of people anymore.
Okay, all right.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes four one. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number eleven, Public Works requesting the BLC award the Dixie Road Pay, Pavement Preservation Project to Blount Construction Company. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Actually, we have both of our transportation engineers here tonight, Tony Wright and Chester Clegg. And this is a new process, a system that we are trying out. And so I'd like to invite either, either or, Tony, I guess if you're handling this, if you'll come up and address the board, please, and explain what this pavement preservation project is all about. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a public works. I'd like to request award of, the, the pavement preservation, Dixie Road construction. What pavement preservation is, is a, what is that? It's a high density. It's a high density mineral bond surface treatment. Applying the high density mineral bond surface treatment is a low cost asphalt preservation treatment that will significantly extend the, the life of asphalt pavement. The section of pavement between Els Club Road and Adams Road is the only section of Dixie Road that has not been resurfaced recently. Applying eight eight five, which is the high density mineral bond surface treatment, will be a one third of the cost of what it would to actually apply asphalt pavement.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Any, any questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you for that. So let me ask you, is that a complete resurface or is that those, the, the, the tar striping I see on the road sometimes? Is that, is that, is this the surfacing you're talking about completely covering the surface of the road?
Yes, included in that is, is actual rubber crack seal, they're going to seal the cracks, and then they apply the actual high, high density mineral bond over, over the pavement.
Oh, God.
It actually, certainly preserves the, the oils and the resin that's initially in, in actual asphalt pavement.
I got you, okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? I seek a motion, please.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, let's see where we are. Requesting the BLC award the Dixie Road Pavement Preservation Project to Blount Construction Company in the amount of, not to exceed seventy one thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty one cents with a funding source of the two thousand eleven SPOLOX.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes, thank you, sir, five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Wright, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is resolution R zero eight zero four two zero eight, a resolution approving the appropriation to the Almond J. Turner Foundation. Mr. Kerr. Unless you want me to do that. Ms. Martin, she has, Mr. Kerr, she has.
Mr. Kerr, sorry, I, I know that you're sitting there digging, and I've got it prepared here, so we'll, we'll work together on it. Tonight before you commissioners, you have a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving a fiscal year 2021 appropriation to the Almond. J Turner Foundation. And I'm going to read that resolution for you all. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia approved by the voters of the state in November of nineteen eighty two and effective July one nineteen eighty three, provides in Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas Newton County, like all other county and municipal governments in Georgia, is limited by the state constitution and the Georgia Code in how public funds can be used, one of the principal restrictions is the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution. Whereas there is no gratuity or violation of the gratuities clause when Newton County receives a countywide substantial benefit in exchange for a budget appropriation. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the substantial benefit of working with community partners and the worthy causes they pursue pursue that are highly beneficial to the citizens of Newton County. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the Almond J Turner Foundation, by sponsoring opportunities for the growth of personal, educational, and leadership qualities of youth in the community, confers countywide substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners wishes to provide appropriations to the aforementioned entity as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia as follows. The Newton County Board of Commissioners finds the following entity's services confer a substantial benefit to Newton County citizens, that entity being the Almond J Turner Foundation Company, a domestic nonprofit corporation. And two, the Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves a budget appropriation in the amount of nine thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty one to the aforementioned entity providing community-wide services to the citizens of Newton County. The appropriation shall be used for the purposes that sponsor opportunities for the growth of personal, educational, and leadership qualities of youth in the community. So resolve this fourth day of August twenty twenty.
Thank you. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Oh. Second.
It's been it's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Schultz.
You know, I I there's not a single person in this room that doesn't think that Almond Turner should be honored in this way. My question is, why? We just approved a budget on July twenty first. Why didn't we have this then? It I don't understand why we're just now getting this. Um, and I I guess my concern is, are is this a pattern that every board meeting, we're going to get another appropriate, we're going to get something else added into the budget? So I I just I need some explanation of why we didn't have this before now.
I take this. Um, so I polled the board, um, and you guys pretty much, you I mean, you agreed on the total. Um, and so I presented it to the county manager. Um, and that's how we got the total nine thousand dollars. Um, it's supposed to be um three scholarships per high school and that came up to nine thousand dollars. I mean, it was a um, I didn't have not one person that went against it, so.
I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying, when was it that we polled the board on it? Was it during the budget meeting or was it? I I'm just, I can't remember that sequence, I didn't. I feel like we should have at least had this
One second. Um.
I'm sure it was before.
Yeah, it was it was before.
It was before, I don't remember exactly when.
Why wasn't it included in the budget at that time?
Um, well, I take responsibility for that um for that, Commissioner Schultz. Um, but I was up under the impression that we all knew um the total amount of of what we was given. Um, is that not correct? But I know you saying you you like this, you would have liked to seen it in the budget.
Yeah, I I'm not disputing that that I I'm not saying I'm not opposed to it because I think it's a fact, it's valuable. It serves a purpose. I'm just saying, let's make sure that we get these things done when we have when we have the budget so that we don't look like we're just continuing to just add budget requests as we roll on. That's my own question. I apologize to the citizens for getting in the line of that.
But I I you know what, I apologize, but I think I polled the board back in um I know it had to be back in March at least, if not before then.
And my point is, especially if we polled the board back in March, it should have been included in the budget. And especially when we had all the appropriations that we included one by one, it should have been in there.
So, Mr. Kerr, we plan on taking it out of um um, you want to explain that?
We're gonna uh take it out of the B O C budget. Um, there's a a line item in there that we can pull the money out of um um currently. And then we would do a budget amendment later uh to put the money back in there. But this that uh would be some of the money that we would use in order to fund this would be um some of the funding that we're going to have that um is in, we do believe we're going to have a surplus at the end of the year and will probably be greater, or we know that it's going to be a little greater than what we had anticipated. And so that's where the funding uh ultimately will come from. As far as putting it in the in the budget, I I get um um, I you know, the the I I I'm sure there was discussion um a- about it, but um I I don't think it 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 didn't make its way to the to the list or um and so there was maybe some miscommunication in there about making it a regular appropriation. But um I you know, and I think this is a special issue. But in any event, you know, yeah, we wouldn't, I don't foresee other things continuing to come, you know, before you all like this. But um but we did, we took it out of the B O C budget and that's where it will be funded currently.
So it's part of the tension. There's a fact that appropriations, so you're not going to be on the appropriations, so it's going to be a lot of the way.
We we'll have to move, we would have to move money into the appropriations and we did not prepare a budget amendment to do that. The funding, the 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 money for that will ultimately come from the surplus that we will have. Once we close out uh twenty twenty, F Y twenty twenty, then we'll have, we'll know what all of those funds are and we can use those funds in order to do that. But in order to fund it currently, we're going to use funding from the B O C events line.
Commissioner Cowan? Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, Megan, I guess they've got their articles of incorporation put together. Can you review those?
I went on the Secretary of State's side. They are active and in compliance.
So it's a five oh one C three and it qualifies for everything that we allow for?
So long as we stay within the county where we're providing students and others here in the county leadership opportunities, um it would not be proper, for example, for this to be a Rockdale County High School where you all would fund. But it is countywide and provides opportunities for all to.
Do you know when those articles were were done? That may.
I can look right quick if you'd like. I'll go on the Secretary of State's page.
That may be part of the reason why it didn't get put in the budget cycle. I don't know when they were done.
I'll tell you.
Wow.
But it takes a little while to get that process done.
And and they had not made an official request when we were considering appropriations at that time.
Right.
That's the other thing, so.
Commissioner Cowan, it appears March twenty third of twenty twenty is when those.
So right when we were starting the budget cycle?
Okay.
Okay.
Any more questions? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Uh, next is item number thirteen, County Attorney, review and consideration of agreement for the seller of realty and release of easement with Jack F. Wheeler and Miriam G. Wheeler. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Chairman Banks. Before you tonight, you have an agreement for sale of realty and release of easements uh related to a Bear Creek property. Um, back in two thousand two, the county purchased six point seven zero three acres of property in fee simple and also acquired an almost nine acre of easement land. Um, as you all know, as we're working through this process of closing this out, the property owners have been notified they have a right to repurchase those properties and Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler have decided that they would like to do so. In front of you, you have the agreement where um they will agree to pay one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. That will come back to the county as we have seen with our three previous purchase agreements. Um, we do have extinguishment of all easements on the land and it goes back in fee. So if you have any questions?
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, this is just pursuant to the language that's in the deeds, right? Okay.
Alright, guys, make make sure you wait to be uh recognized uh from the chairman, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So Megan, this money goes back into the water fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? I seek a motion, please.
Ms. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion, we approve, and I'll read it. Review and consideration of the agreement for sale of realty and and release of easements with Jack F. Wheeler and Miriam G. Wheeler regarding repurchase of fee property totaling six point seven zero three acres from County Tax Parcel Number zero one zero six zero zero four and easements totaling eight point nine seven three acres released from their abutting property at Tax Parcel zero one zero five zero three one for one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars and zero cents.
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I had to kind of leave the room for a minute. Is this this part of some Bear Creek property? Okay, I get you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is um alcohol license, the quickest stop, one one two three zero Georgia thirty six, Covetown, Georgia three zero zero one four. I think that's Kareem Allah, District Five. First reading, oh yeah, first reading, I'm sorry. First reading. Um, next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about any topic, you may do so at this time. You have three minutes. Please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. Citizen comments. You want to make comments? Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Oh. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Sheriff mentioned tonight about uh Mr. Jack Simpson and I don't know if y'all met him or know him. Uh, interesting man. Uh, one thing, I was sitting down talking with him one day, Jack used to work with the FBI and Jack was one of the agents involved out of the Atlanta office that was looking for Lee Harvey, I'm sorry, um, not Lee Harvey Oswald, but uh the assassin of Martin Luther King.
James Earl Ray?
James Earl Ray. And uh was actually processed the car. They found it at Capitol Homes. Um, that was a housing complex right there next to the Capitol years ago, but uh he was one of the agents involved in that. So it's interesting to sit down and talk with people. You just never know what they've done, so interesting point.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just wanted to thank you about, wish me a happy birthday.
Oh, wow. Happy birthday. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
I noticed that there are some um uh bookbag giveaways and school giveaways that are occurring in the next couple of weeks. Um, I'm just curious as to what kind of participation, um, like, for example, the rec department giveaway, what kind of participation are we um supposed to uh be involved in? And I you know, I'm obviously very concerned about staying safe and making sure that we're that we're doing the right thing in terms of keeping everyone safe. I just need some direction on how what what we as commissioners are supposed to participate in in terms of these giveaways?
Please support the um the uh rec department. I will be out of town, so I won't be here um at this at the first one, but I will be at the Denny Dobbs, um, the one they do at Denny Dobbs. So guys, please be here and and go and support them, if you will.
In terms of donations, do they need donations? Do we need to um, is anyone soliciting donations for these different giveaways?
Um, I think I think, Mr. Kerr, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they have um all the things they need already. Is that correct?
I I think they do, but I'll be glad to check with Tenard to find out if there's anything, but I believe they've got all the everything that they need for the giveaway.
And in terms of the sheriff's giveaways, uh sheriff's distribution for um, is there, can you give us some direction on what you need from us in what in terms of volunteer time, um donations? Is there anything that you if can you give us some information about that?
Yes, thank you. We have um, we are gathering. We're yet gathering and putting all of the particulars together. Uh, because of COVID, uh, we're unsure exactly our layout and our platform. However, we do have a drop off point, and the drop off point is going to be over at the West Side precinct. Uh, there are a number of factors that we're looking at because if they go online, we may have to assist students with some type of assistance, particularly say we may have families who may not have internet services. So there are a variety of areas that we're exploring right now to ensure that every student is taken care of.
So Lloyd, if you could, you could get with the sheriff and with the rec department and just, you know, give us some real clear directives on what what we need to know about volunteering and donations and where to be and where not to be, you know, with, because I I think in in other in in a different time, we would all be jumping in and saying, yeah, let's go. But because of COVID, we want to be really sure that we are following all the guidelines and following the rules and not creating chaos.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
That is correct. Generally, we would have had ours by now, um, but because of COVID, we're taking extra precautions to make sure that number one, we're safe, number two, that we're able to provide the services to all of the students who may require some form of assistance. We will have all our particulars and facts in somewhat in order. Once we figure out exactly going forward with the school system, uh, we're going to meet with them and get some facts from them. And then I'll be more than happy, Lloyd, to relay the information to you.
Thank you.
And to all of you, and then welcome to our effort and ensure that, because we can't do it alone. So it's going to take all of us to make sure that each and every last one of the students is taken care of, particularly this year.
Well, and I I think that, you know, I I don't want to confuse by by people thinking that we're talking about the county giving away, making, but that that those of us individually can contribute and that we can um ask people in the community to give those contributions. So, you know, we just need as much information to help. I just need one, two, three. Do this.
Sheriff, can you give us your date one more time so we can get it on the record, please? Do you have your date?
You would ask me that? The person that. The person that, uh, in charge of that is, uh, Susan.
Yeah.
And what I will do is I'll get that date for you. Uh, we had scheduled one date, moved it because of, uh, the number of cases that were increasing. We moved it, so we have set another date. I'll get it to you, as a matter of fact. It may be posted online now.
Okay.
But trying to keep up with all those dates is kind of difficult.
Okay. If you can, can you send it over so we can, I can get it out to, to, to the group? I appreciate that.
I'll check it.
Okay. And Lloyd, before, can you give us a date for the rec department? I think it's the eighth and the.
For, I believe it's the eighth and the, the eighth and the 11th.
The eighth and 11th? No, I thought it was Saturday and Saturday.
Yeah, I believe it. I'll have to look up the date. I was thinking it was the eighth and the 15th, but I'll have to, I'll have to revise, look. Eighth and the 15th. The eighth is over at Turner Lake, and then the 15th is going to be out at Denny Dobbs. Essentially, what the rec department is doing is assembling everything in the bag, and then they will have the bags so that somebody can drive by and pick it up. Um, and they're, they'll have, uh, about 300 bags for each, each time. But I'll check to see what they need and, and, I mean, I think certainly, um, you know, they'd welcome to have anybody that would like to come and, you know, the, any of the commissioners that would like to be there, you know, to wave and say hello and that sort of thing, but, uh, and maybe help to pass them out to the people in the cars. But, um, but I'll find out from, uh, Tenard or, pardon me, whoever in his department that is, um, you know, managing the event. Um, I'll find out. I'll get some more information from them.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Um, you're good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I was going to talk about the back-to-school, but now we've had this lengthy discussion about it. Um, it is August the 8th at Turner Lake at 11:00 a.m. And then August the 15th at Denny Dobbs Park at 11:00 a.m. Uh, if anyone needs more information, they can call 770-786-4373. Um, this is a drive-through event, and so everyone will stay in their cars. Children must be in the vehicle to receive a bookbag, and they're limiting three bookbags per car. Is what they're limiting. Um, and, um, it'll be while supplies last. And then I think with Sheriff Brown, um, their back-to-school, I, I saw that they, they are having a collection period from August the 3rd through August the 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., weekdays only. And of course, the drop-off location is at Newton County Sheriff's Office, West Side Precinct, 3612 Salem Road. We need, uh, masks, hand sanitizer, pencils, pens, paper, highlighters, binders, backpacks, notebooks, folders, markers, crayons, colored pencils, erasers, scissors, calculators, and et cetera. Um, you can contact Deputy Susan Young at 678-218-2423. Um, or her email address is S-M-Y-O-U-N-G@newtonsheriffgeorgia.org. Um, on that one as well. I got you, Sheriff. What's that? Um, on here, it doesn't say the date. It just says the collection period?
Dates are 14 and the 21st, 14 and the 21st of this month.
Thank you.
Do we know what time, Sheriff Brown? Okay. And then, um, I also wanted to add that I am personally, as a commissioner, starting a legal series. Um, it's going to be on Facebook Live, so for those that want to tune in, uh, to the legal series, I'm going to be doing some interviews with, uh, individuals within our legal community, having those conversations, uh, to kind of help, uh, educate our citizens on how our legal, uh, system works and how it operates. Um, the first one is going to actually be tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. on Facebook Live. And then the next one is going to be on Friday at 7:00 p.m. Um, so tune in to hear these special guests, uh, within our legal community to kind of really help our citizens, educate our citizens on what, um, the individuals in our legal community, what they do and how they do their jobs. And so tune in to the legal series. It's coming up.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of brief items here. I, I want to, I want to give a shout out to our, our BOC departments. We, 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 uh, you know, we greatly appreciate our, uh, our sheriff's department and our fire department, but we don't shout out very many times to our BOC departments. We, we get to throw rocks at Brittany for about four months out of the year. And we appreciate what her and her teams do, her team does. Um, but tonight I wanted to do, I wanted to say, um, thank you to, and she's not here, Judy Johnson's team. Um, they have gotten to be under an extreme amount of pressure. And, and when I filter something to her through Lloyd, it just, it just gets done, as, as with every, every department. But, um, thing, things really get done. So I wanted to recognize Judy tonight for her, for her outstanding service. Um, and, and maybe I can do that at each meeting, maybe give somebody a shout out that, that I interact with, because they're all such great people. But, and the second thing I, as, as, as a school system's try to go back to school or go virtual and/or go back to school, I don't think we can lose sight of the fact, the teams in our community that were helping to feed our children. Nelson Heights, Washington Street, um, those community centers, the Y, Harvest Baptist Church. If you haven't seen their operation, it's huge. So I, I don't want us to lose sight that there's, there's probably going to be difficulties this fall with, with feeding our kids again, our continuation of those difficulties. So I think it's important we just stay cognizant of that, of that fact. And, and, uh, we understand what's going on with our kids and, and, and I'll say it for the, you know, the thousand, 100,000th time, right? If, if they're not in school, a lot of them don't get fed. So, and that's just a simple fact. So just keep those folks in mind, if you don't mind. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to echo that. I was actually, um, I actually did a video today um, about, um, about that various topic today with, um, Action Ministries. And, um, video went really well. You know, but they are stuck in a heart, they're stuck in between a rock and a hard place because they're going to be trying to get inside the school system to get old super PACs away, and then also the ones that's doing, uh, virtual learning. So trying to get reached the ones that's at home. So it's going to be very difficult for them to, to make it happen. But, you know, they promise they're going to do everything, everything they can to, um, assist those kids. And you're 100% right. Some of them, that's the only meal that they see. Um, so please keep that in mind as, as our kids get ready to return back to school. But I don't have anything else. I am, um, so excited. I'm trying to see how can I prolong the time for about 30 minutes? We, we have a, um, no need for executive session? Man, um, wow. I really don't want to go on tonight. I seek a motion that we adjourn. Anyone who want to second that motion? It's been, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second. I see you, Lloyd. Second by Commissioner Henderson. All in favor? It passed five to zero.